Big statement here. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment.
I can't hear you.
This thing. I can't, I'm having it in my mouth here. All right, let's try it this way. Okay, can you hear me? All right, this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held on Wednesday, February 27, 2019, at 7:30 PM, well, quarter to eight, in the municipal complex. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this regularly scheduled meeting has been provided by prominently displaying the schedule of the regular meetings on the official notice board in the municipal complex, and by transmitting a copy of this schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, Trenton Times, The Trentonian, and to Comcast Cable of New Jersey. A copy was also filed with the Clerk of Princeton. Okay. So, Claudia, could you call a roll?
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Davich? Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mrs. Shriver? Mr. Tenable? Mr. Valvanes?
Here.
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Ms. Purcell-Lambros? Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the first, we have minutes, and I believe the minutes, 16th of October, Wednesday the 16th of October, 2018. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at them? Any comments?
No.
We have a motion?
I move approval.
I'll second it.
Okay. Claudia?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Chen, thank you.
We have three resolutions to go through. The first is 801 State Road, Block 901, Lots 17 and 18, in the S2 Zone. It carries the number ZP 1818-598.
Board members, I have a couple of very minor corrections. We need to revise it to indicate that Mr. Bucy is the owner, not the applicant, and wherever there's a reference to State Street, it should be State Road. And in paragraph four, there is one more controlling regulation, which is 10B-271. So those are the revisions I would propose to you.
Okay. Is there anyone here on this application?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Are you in agreement?
Yes, I asked Ms. Casey to make up changes, and 10B-271 is the...
Controlling.
...for the zone number.
Any of the board members have any questions, comments on this resolution? Not? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to accept.
Accept. Ms. Coulson accepts.
Second.
Mr. Floyd seconds. Okay. Claudia?
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. The next one. 159 Snowden Lane, Block 7505, Lot 11, our 5 Zone, the number, carrying a number Z1818-654. Comments? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. The last resolution is 138 Poe Road, Block 4601, Lot 31, our 4 Zone, carrying the number
There is one spelling error at the bottom of page two. The name Polly Strauss should be P-O-L-L-Y.
What number?
It's in number 10, but it's the very last line on page two.
You mean the reference to the resident?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Polly Strauss, 147 Poe.
Okay.
Is there anyone here on this application? Any other comments? Motion?
Move to approve or accept.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Karen? Can Ms. Chen second if she...
Oh, no, you can't. I'm sorry, you're right, you can't, because you voted against it, right?
Oh, I can't approve the minutes. Okay.
That's right.
I'll second it.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now for the applications. Karen, do you want to make a statement?
I will. Board members, we received a written request from the attorney for the applicant indicating that the applicant and the neighbors are continuing to make progress with respect to their discussions, and the applicant's attorney asks that the application be carried to the next board agenda. And they've also given us an extension of time within which to consider the application. So I believe that's March 27.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So if that's acceptable to the board, then we're indicating now to anybody who's interested that it's being carried to March 27, and there won't be any further noticing other than what we're indicating tonight.
Is there anyone here in the ordinance for 394 Ridgeview Road? Okay, all right, that's the ordinance we're discussing, or the application we're discussing is going to be carried to March 27. The next application we have scheduled is 415 Franklin Avenue, Block 7310, Lot 14, in the R7 Zone, carrying the number Z1818-601. Karen?
Now, the noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application. And I think we have the applicant's attorney here tonight.
We do. You'll be hearing me for this application and the one following it as well. Ryan Kennedy from Stevens and Lee. On behalf of the applicant, we'd ask that this be carried...
Excuse me, excuse me. No.
Apologies, I'll repeat that. Ryan Kennedy from the offices of Stevens and Lee. You'll hear from me on this application and the following one. We had been in communications with the office. We had a scheduling issue, but because this is a D variance, I suspect we would have a different reason for the request had we been here tonight as well. But we ask that you take jurisdiction and carry this to the next meeting.
Okay. And when will this be? When would we carry this?
March 27.
March 27? Okay. Okay, so for those of you in the audience, it's 415 Franklin Avenue, if anybody's here to listen to that. Okay, that'll be carried to March 27.
And then the next one, 1107 Great Road. The noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
This one, again, Ryan Kennedy from Stevens and Lee for this applicant. Based on some discussions we had with the zoning office, we were requesting some additional time to consider some of the requests that may be coming from some of the neighbors on this matter as well.
Okay. All right, and that'll be carried till the 27th also? Do we have many other applications for the 27th?
We have many other applications, but we have room on the 27th for these two.
Okay, so we should be okay then?
Several others. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, good. That's 1107 Great Road, so that one will be carried to March 27 also.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda, 76 Valley Road, Block 7001, Lot 26, our 6 Zone, in the former township, carrying the number Z1818-670.
The board has jurisdiction.
Hello?
Okay.
Mr. Bridger will swear you in for the evening. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, let's begin. Derek, would you like to read your memo?
The applicant, Kirsten Thoff and Ted Nado, are seeking C1 and C2 variance to permit the construction of a new single-family house on a non-conforming lot. The lot does not meet the required minimum lot frontage or lot width, and a variance is also requested to permit a deviation from the front yard setback. And the property is located in the R6 Zone and subject to the use and bulk regulations in accordance with Sections 10B, 253, 255, and 246 of the Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance. Existing single-family house is permitted as of right. Subject lot is non-compliant with respect to the required lot width. Requirement is 85. The existing is 75 feet. The frontage requirement is 85, and the existing is 75 feet. And they've requested a variance from the prevailing front yard setback, which is 54.2 feet, and they're proposing a 44.8-foot setback. Existing single-family home will be demolished. I think it might have already been demolished...
Yes.
...since this memo was written. New structure will be constructed. Applicant should advise the board whether there are any adjoining landowners that either wish to sell them land to make the subject property whole or sell their land to the adjoining landowners. They have submitted plans for the new single-family dwelling, and it does comply with the applicable bulk regulations. Just recap, the variances are seeking frontage variance, the requirement's 85, the existing is 75. Seeking a lot width variance, the requirement's 85, the existing is 75. And they are seeking a variance from the 54.2-foot prevailing setback and proposing a front yard setback of 44.8. They've requested consideration under both the C1 and C2 criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Okay. All right, would you...
Sure.
Do you want to present?
Are you both going to testify?
We might.
You might?
Mostly it'll be me.
All right, then, Ms. Thoff and Mr. Nado, if you both raise your right hand, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Hi, good evening. Thanks for being here. So this is an application for, as Derek has already said, lot width and lot frontage. So both of those on the existing lot are 75 feet. The zoning district is R6, and the minimum lot width in that zoning district is 85 feet. The lot to the left of us and the three lots to the right of us all have 75-foot widths. In fact, I apologize, six of them in a row are 75 feet wide on our side of the street. This lot has had a house on it since 1940, up until about two weeks ago, and so we are asking to build another single-family house, but it will comply with all of the bulk requirements with the exception, I hope, of the prevailing front yard setback, which I will get to shortly. We have been in contact with all of the neighbors. We passed out the letter that you see here, and actually spoke to many of them. We know many of them already because we built a house on the lot to the right of this lot last year, and in fact are now friends of the people who bought that house. So we spoke to them and the woman on the left, Tricia, who we're also friends with now, to ask whether or not they would be willing to either buy the lot or sell us 10 feet of their lot to make our lot compliant and their lot non-compliant. Neither of them was interested in either of those scenarios. Tricia in particular would have to sell us 2 feet of her house to give us 85 feet. So that was a nonstarter. We think that it's reasonable to build another house on this lot as it's had a house on it for 70-plus years. So the graph up there shows who we talked to, who we passed out notices to, and of course we noticed everybody within a 200-foot radius as well. The, as I mentioned, this is in the R6 District. There are, all of these yellow dots indicate the lots that are nearby that are non-conforming in terms of their lot widths as well. So it's not an unusual occurrence in the district. So we don't believe that we're asking for anything unusual. And this is another illustration of the number of lots that are 75 feet wide, which is all of the surrounding lots. The other variance that we are requesting is for the prevailing front yard setback. And I am doing this because I'm appearing in front of you anyway, so I figured I would ask. Basically, this, the original building on this lot was at the setback that we're requesting, so we're asking to put the new building in the same location in terms of its front facade as the old building, and that happens to line up with the building on its left and the three buildings on its right. And the really, the reason that the prevailing setback is calculated as about, like, nine and a half feet behind that is that there's a group of houses to the left of number 70, which are set back considerably. They were built at a different time, and so those are all, I think, about 15 feet behind this row of houses. I thought it would be more in keeping with this row of houses and, you know, to maintain uniformity in the streetscape, to have this house in the same place that the other one was at. And this is a site plan of the proposed house, which, to answer the question on everybody's mind, is not going to look the same as the house that I built next to it. It will be different. I'm not into carbon copying houses, so it's different in a bunch of ways, which you can see from the illustration, and I think everybody on the street's happy about, and conforms with the side yard setbacks, the rear yard setback, the height, et cetera, et cetera, FAR. And I think that's all I needed to say. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. All right. Any board members have any questions?
Ms. Thoff, do you want to make that and exhibit your PowerPoint and leave it with the board secretary? So we'll call that A1 then.
Yes.
No questions? Is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak on this application? Okay. Hearing none. Let's go into executive session. Any comments? Comments? This, to me, seems pretty logical. Putting the house back within that prevailing setback is going to appear that this house is awkward relative to the houses around it, so I think this is a, I think this is a good solution, and I would support it. Would somebody like to, any other, you want to say anything else before we take action?
No, I just look forward to building another nice house.
You only talk yourself out of it. Anybody like to make a motion?
I would move to approve.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Claudia?
No conditions?
Yes. Are you calling? I couldn't hear what you said.
Conditions? With conditions or...
Any conditions, lighting, drainage?
Well, excuse me, that's right. Our, we, that's a good point. Thank you, Michael.
Would you like me to address Barry's question?
Our standard conditions, our standard conditions will apply, right? It's got right by me there.
Yes.
The two conditions are lighting.
Yeah.
And you're aware of that?
I am.
That the light source should not be visible?
Yes.
And then drainage is the other, that...
Yes.
You know, we want you not to impact the neighbors.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I worked with that with my civil engineer.
And thank you, Michael, for reminding me of that. I miss that one. That's it.
Is it too late to ask another question?
Yes.
It is. No. No. Okay. I just suddenly wondered about trees. Did you have to take down any trees? Will you take down any trees?
There were some, there were a number of dead trees, actually, in the back that the town arborist suggested that I take down. There was one that I was planning on taking down because it was in the way of the new house, but then the arborist went out and said, "Oh, by the way, you have others back there that are dead. You should take them down before they fall down." So I did. Yeah. But there's one lovely oak in the front that is staying, and it is there.
Great.
And I hope it doesn't get diseased. So my fingers are crossed.
Okay, so I think we're ready to vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Thank you, it's approved.
Thank you very much.
Well, good luck. I had a, I had a 70-pound tree cut down next to my house. It sure worked. On Sunday night, I was in my dorm, and I got a call from my next-door neighbor, and he said, "Did you hear the noise?" And I said, and I said, "Of course." And it snapped at the base, and it sat behind my garage alongside the house, my garage in front of the house. And how it missed the house, I'll never know. I mean, it was, it snapped and jumped two feet and then fell forward and missed my house, missed my neighbor's house, took out another tree and probably 50 feet of fence. Missed the emergency generator, missed the electric balance. I mean, this thing was huge. It was two 24-inch trucks on the street, and it took out the power of the street. Okay. All right, our next case is 7 Madison Street, Block 2803, Lot 48 and 84 in the R4 Zone. It carries the case number Z1818-674.
The noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Derek, would you like to?
Thank you. Steve and Jenny Gilbert are the owners and applicants of 7 Madison Street. They are seeking a C1 and a C2 variance to permit the reconstruction of a dormer, in exception to the maximum height for an accessory structure. Property's located in the R4 Zone in the former Princeton borough and is subject to the use and bulk regulations of 17A, 254, and 258. There's a typo on my report. The lot area is complying, the required lot area is 6,000, the existing is 6,949. The lot's deficient regarding the required 60-foot lot width. The existing lot width is 34.33. The subject property is non-compliant with respect to numerous bulk requirements, the required side yard setback of 8 feet. The existing is 1.9. The larger side yard setback requirement of 12 feet, whereas the existing is 8.7 feet. The combined side yard setback is 20 feet, the existing is 10.6 feet, and the height-to-setback ratio requirement is 3 to 1, and the existing is 10.7 to 1. And the accessory structure height requirement is 15 feet, the existing is 18.5 feet. And the applicant is proposing to reconstruct the existing 2 feet 4-inch by 5 feet 5-inch entry doorway to the second floor of this property, there's a dormer associated with it, to permit a code-compliant door of 3 feet by 6 feet 8. The applicant's intend to convert the second floor of this accessory structure to a senior secondary or a senior accessory rental unit. Both owners are over the appropriate age. The development of the accessory apartment is permitted as of right. It will require a zoning permit and registration with the Housing Bureau. The reconstruction of the larger door in the dormer increased the existing degree of noncompliance with regard to the maximum height requirement. The maximum height is 15, and this brings it up to 16.5 feet. And as I mentioned earlier, they've requested both the C1 and C2 consideration. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
This has, this is an accessory use of an additional residence on the property. It has nothing to do with a secondary residence?
This is a secondary senior residence. It'll be a secondary senior residence.
All right.
They're getting this variance first, and I guess they'll apply for that, obviously, after they get appropriate access to the site. But the site, the use itself is, it meets, the senior apartment meets the requirements in the code. So, okay.
Good. Well, would you like to make your case?
Pressure's on.
She didn't switch over. Oh.
Or do you have to hold it down again?
Stand?
No, that would be it.
Seconds?
Yeah. Go ahead, try that, then you may not see here.
That's fine, I may see it there.
Connect to, who's that?
Wireless.
No. Okay. No, it's okay.
That should work. Yeah, I don't, I don't. Okay. Well. See, that brings this.
It's not even making any... Is that the right chord?
No, it's...
No, it's...
No. No.
Mr. Gilbert, do you have any paper copies you can show the board of...
Not really. But I can talk to it. I think the description probably...
All right, then, we'll swear you in then. All right, let me swear you in then. If you'd raise your right hand, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing.
Excuse me one second, Karen. Would, there's a gentleman in the audience. I can give him my copy of the drawings if you want to see them.
No, there's no need. I'm just a buffalo visiting. I have no interest in...
Okay. All right. Just want to make sure you're informed. Okay. Please continue, sorry.
Well, thanks for hearing the application. My name's Steve Gilbert. This is my wife Jenny Harts horn. The property is located on Madison. It actually, the front of the property is on Madison. The back of the property is on Branch Avenue, which is a small alleyway. And the accessory structure is at the back of the property. It is two stories. Two-bay garage at the bottom and this open loft space at the top. The, and access into the garage is through Branch Alley Avenue, I should say. The accessory structure, as I said, sits in the back. Our lot area is roughly 6,900 square feet. I had a lot of nice pictures, but unfortunately... Not the copy of this, but...
Well, they have your application.
Right, right, okay. So, as I said, the, our, the second-story loft space is accessed through a staircase. And the issue that, and the reason we're here is that the current door at the top of that staircase is five foot five inches. And I, it's great for my ego, because I feel like a very tall man when I go in, but I hit my head too many times. The code requires three foot, sorry, six foot eight. And so the reason we're here is to install a dormer, to infill a larger door that's code-compliant. You do have a sketch in your, in the presentation showing the before and the after. I also provided views of, of the, that door, views from Branch Alley, which show that, that really cannot be, you can't even see the dormer, where the new dormer will be. And then I also included views from two neighbors' homes, 5 Madison and 3 1/2 Madison. So you can get a sense of what they'll be looking at. You know, both parties have said that they support what we're doing here. So that's really the purpose of why we're here.
Okay.
So thanks for your consideration. What's that? Well, I guess the reason we're here and the reason we're asking for the variance is that we, in order to go above the roof line, we're going to be needing a variance. So it's really just, so we have to put the dormer in to allow for the larger door. Yeah, sorry, I didn't explain that.
You can't make the door bigger without, you know...
Yeah, no, it's, it's...
You get it, okay. Because we don't know what you have versus this.
Yeah, we have, we have everything you submitted.
Okay, cool.
And obviously, your solution looks to be consistent with the house, in my opinion. So you're basically going to build a dormer, blend it into the existing roof line.
Right.
Allowing enough space just to raise that door to make it conform.
Exactly. There is already a similar eyebrow dormer on the opposite side over a small window.
So this will be, in a sense, consistent in height with that. It'll just be, well, actually, it's a little higher.
Probably a little higher.
But it's consistent with the existing house.
That's correct.
And allows you to do that. Okay, you're going to use the existing staircase and everything?
That's right.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Anybody, any members have a comment on this?
Guess you fit it in under a C2. There's nothing in C1.
Okay. Don't do this as a C2. I walk by this, I walk up there at least once a week.
Yeah.
Cutting through, but not throwing any beer cans on the ground.
Let's hope it's even nicer.
But I know it's a great little...
The house, the house has great karma. And that's the great, the house has wonderful karma.
Oh, yeah.
We knew the gentleman who lived there before, and we're very pleased to be living there.
No, it's a, it's a very nice little setup there, and I think it'd make a nice residence for someone, so. All right. No other comments, audience? Do you have any comments on it?
I live on Madison. I'm thinking here. I'm just interested in the activity coming by.
Thank you. Good for you to join us. Okay.
I'm, I'm curious. I don't know that it, actually, it's none of our business, I guess, but it, is this, is there anything, are there just rooms and a bathroom? Is that what's in that space?
Either bathrooms, no, it's just an open loft space.
I assume you're going to add, you're going to add, it's a residency, you're going to add a kitchen and...
It's to design something.
Yeah, you'll improve the inside, but that's a building permit issue and...
But right now, we do, we do need to get roof work done. And so we want to be able to do the dormer right away.
Okay. Are you, do you use the garage now? I'm just curious.
I do use the garage. It's a little tight getting in from the Branch Avenue, but glad I have a small car.
Are you going to make any other, are you going to change any landscaping or anything like that?
No plans.
That's not within our purview, but I'm just curious.
Yeah.
And plant flowers eventually.
Okay, good. Good. Any other comments? Okay. Somebody would like to make a motion possibly?
I move approval as a C2. Under the C2. Second.
All right, one thing, our standard conditions, drainage. We don't want you to increase the rate of runoff from your property to adjacent properties. And you're going to have a light, I didn't notice. Is there a light adjacent to the door at the top of the stairs?
There'll have to be for... Yeah, we will, we intend to put one in, as well as at the bottom, so, yeah.
Okay, well, you're required, the building code will require a light at a door. And, and our condition is, we don't want the light source visible from the public right away.
Right, I understand.
The fixture itself can be, just not the bulb.
Right.
Okay, so it just needs to be a, you know, a compliant fixture in that regard. Okay. All right. Claudia?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Thank you, it's approved.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You had the whole presentation.
Five minutes, right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I think we have no other business tonight. We're adjourned.